Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call this meeting to order. And if you can, and if you will, please stand and recite the pleas allegiance to the flag with us.
Certainly, Alderman Lockett.
Present.
Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderman Spivey.
Here.
Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Alderman Hudson.
Present.
Mayor Ford.
Present. At this time.
Yes. Good evening, shall we pray? And suddenly, there was with the angel, a multitude of the heavenly hosts praising God, and saying glory to God in the highest, and on earth, peace, goodwill towards men. We come praying tonight for our mayor, our council members, fire department, our police department, all the great men and women of the city of Country Club Hills. May God bless the residents, may God bless our troops, and may God bless America. And I heard him exclaim, as he disappeared out of sight, "Merry Christmas to all, and to Country Club Hills a blessed night." Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, thank you so much. All right.
Mayor, if I could be recognized.
Yes, go right here.
Pastor Taylor and his wife had a holiday event, was it last week?
Twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth. It was a really, really, when I say really great event, it was. They had some of the best entertainment I've heard in a while. I'll call myself going there just to hear Javon Watson. And old Pastor Taylor pulled it off on me, put Javon on last. So I had to stay through the whole program, which I was there from three to seven. And when I say it was some great entertainment, it was great entertainment. And one thing that we didn't know, or I found out also, that Pastor Taylor is also a comedian. Which he did very well at. So it was a great time, a great show, and I'm looking forward to the next one. It was very nice. And also, if I could mention, they had a young lady there, her name was, last name, Miller. A young lady that had the fifteen heart attacks. Of Shakar's mama. Yes, yes. So the young lady just came to kind of speak and tell her story that she had fifteen heart attacks, and she had this autism son, and that everywhere she went, in every hospital, they said that he would never be able to go to school, that he would always need special attention, he wouldn't be able to read, he wouldn't be able to keep up or anything. Well, I'm here to tell you, he has a full ride to Morehouse, and also Arkansas Pine Buff, with Valor Victoria four point oh.
Right.
And not only that, he's a rapper, so he raps about his condition. So now he's opening up for Common, Jennifer Hudson. You know, every big name that's out there on the stage is, he's the ones who open up the world. So I thought that was really nice for you guys to recognize him and share that with us. Thank you.
Thank you so much, that's really good. Okay. So moving on then, we need a approval of minutes. Journal proceedings?
Yes, journal proceedings. I'm sorry. Journal proceedings. Approval of regular city council meeting minutes from October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly motion and second, are there any questions or corrections? Okay, here are no corrections, roll call please.
Certainly, Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next we have communications by the mayor. And what I would like to do at this time is bring Ms. Jennifer up to the mic. Talk a little bit about the Christmas. And she puts on her Santa Claus hat, and she moves to the podium.
Hi, everybody, we're back again, we had the verification awards, and now we're the one going to go around and look at the holiday house decorations. So this was came in your water bill, where it was up front. So on Thursday night, about six o'clock, between six and eight o'clock, if you have your lights on, then we'll be going around to the people who have entered. It's a great thing that the mayor and the city council allow us to do. It's a lot of fun for us, but then we like, you know, recognizing our neighbors, and our people here that go above and beyond to make our city a beautiful place to live. And thank you, Mayor and City Council, for the opportunity to provide this to our residents.
Thank you so much, and we look forward to those awardees. As you guys identify them, we'll bring them to the city council, and I believe you'll give them a.
The invited monitor commissioner will be here in January, so you'll let you know who they have picked to.
Great, great.
Which ones we picked.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so next we have the city clerks' report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to remind everyone, in reference to food donations, that when you're donating to the pantries for this holiday season, please be considerate and check the expiration dates. We've been going through pulling out some items that were older, and we don't want to send anyone food that's not fit to eat. So we want to make sure that all the items are safe, and it does add quite a bit of time to sorting when we have to go through and pull out the old items. Also, State Rep. Debbie Myers-Martin has a coat drive box in the lobby. That coat drive box, all the items going in there will benefit the Country Club Hills Wellness Center. So please donate, because it is going here in Country Club Hills, it's a home event. And last item, excuse me, the twenty twenty-three year in review. I just want to say that I've been able to, as clerk, increase the revenue for business licenses, also implementing portions in there requiring certain supporting documents, and making sure that the businesses are legitimate. So we make sure that they are collecting, we are collecting taxes from them, and we're enforcing the display of business license. And we want to continue to get the recorded documents, the retention, and the record disposal documents, I should say, taking care of for the city. Twenty twenty-four, we want to continue this and also streamline the codification process. We've been able to get everything, not quite online, but it's been approved, and it's in processing with the software company, and in the report.
May we recognize you?
Yes.
Are you standing the Wellness Center, are you referring to Pats, or you?
Right, that's the technical name is the Wellness Center. Yes. Everything is going for them.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to back up a minute here, and that's one item that I didn't report, under my report, under the mayor's report. Mayor James Ford and the city council, all of us here, would like to invite all the seniors to the Joy of Christmas, the Joy of Christmas luncheon that's going to be held here on December fourteenth, coming up, from eleven-thirty a.m. to one p.m., one thirty p.m. here at City Hall at the lower level. We want to invite all senior citizens to come out and enjoy a Christmas luncheon with the mayor and the city council. So pass the word on, and all of you out there in Country Club Hills land, please take note, come on in, and share a meal with us. Okay, with that said, I'm going to move down to the committee reports. And the first committee we have tonight would be the Finance Committee, and that would be Alderman Lockett.
Thank you, Mayor. Seeking council approval for the payables in the amount of one million, two hundred and sixty thousand, fifty-one dollars and seventy-one cents.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly motion and second, are there any questions or comments? Okay, here are no questions or comments, roll call please.
Certainly, Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Next is approval for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four property casualty insurance renewal with Alliant Insurance Services.
Second.
It's been properly motioned and second, are there any questions? Okay, here are no questions, roll call please.
Certainly, Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next is approval of ordinance providing, I need an ordinance number.
Zero dash two-five dash two-three.
Ordinance providing for the tax levy assessment of collection of the taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty twenty-four, and ending April thirty, twenty twenty-five. And after a long and hard drawn out discussion, we decided to go with the three point eight.
Okay. Need a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do I have any questions? Okay, here are no questions, roll call please.
Certainly, Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is two items, housekeeping items for the twenty twenty-three truth and taxation.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
It's been probably motion and second, are there any questions? Here are no questions, roll call please.
Certainly, Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
And.
Motion carries.
Last but not least is a resolution number.
Zero dash two-five, I'm sorry, R dash two-five dash two-three.
So this is just a resolution for the county clerk to reduce the amount added to the city's levy for loss and cost. So it's nothing we do on our end, adjustments they make if we're short, or if we never get more money in, but if we're short, then they'll make the adjustments.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
All right, it's been properly motion and second, are there any questions? Okay, here are no questions, roll call please.
Certainly, Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And that'll be the end of my report.
Thank you, I have Law and Ordinance Government Operations, Alderman Hudson, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor, I had a meeting this past Monday, December fourth, twenty twenty-three. My next meeting is TBA, to be announced.
All right, thank you. Public Works and UTO, Alderman Davis.
Thank you, Mayor, I need a resolution number, clerk.
Certainly, R dash two-six dash two-three.
Okay, I'd like to seek council approval for a resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code, and this is approving the spending of our MFT money that's already in the budget. And items that are included are like sidewalk repair, replacements, regulatory sign replacement, tree removal, energy costs, sign maintenance, and drainage maintenance in the roadsaw.
Second.
Okay, it's been probably motion and second, are there any questions?
Got questions.
One thing, can I, Mayor, I just want to clarify, this is for the twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three, which is just housekeeping, and it's for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, which we're currently in now.
Okay, thank you for that.
May I be recognized, please?
Yes, go right here.
To Alderman Davis, I see twenty twenty-four, when, what month do you think they're going to start back up? Because it's got to be when the weather is nice?
Which, what you're speaking of?
For the sidewalks and curves.
And now that's under, that's actually, yeah, the sidewalk, yeah, we have to have weather to do that.
Weather's better, you got to.
Right. And this is money that we're already spending too, so whatever was spent in the budget, this is just something that we have to turn into Illinois Highway Code, and we're supposed to do it right after we pass the budget. So every year we got to do this, this is just.
Okay, so it'll be out to April.
Yep, so it lets us spend the money, and it's actually documentation that lets us do that.
Thanks for that information, appreciate it.
So we're looking at April.
How are you spending it, and are you spending it in the proper way?
Correct.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Go right there.
Clerk, can you repeat that resolution number one more time for me? I think it was R.
R dash two-six dash two-three.
Thank you.
Alderman Davis?
Yes, Chair, the deco was a great job, but the six hundred thousand that I put in the budget, or we put in the budget, Ward one hasn't had any street work done. So I'm wondering, do we carry that six hundred thousand over when we go for a new budget, and it's added to it, or what? Because not one street was done, based off the money I put in the budget, four streets.
Okay, and Alderman, just let me clarify, this is not streets, this is sidewalks.
I'm asking you a question often.
We would have to do another resolution for that spending, so that's a different question, actually. I mean, it doesn't pertain to this resolution.
I was just asking, because you're the chair, what would be the next step? Because the money was not used this year for any purpose of fixing streets. Is it another step, or we can talk about it at a meeting, whatever?
Proper thing to do, Alderman, and once we get to the next fine meeting, look at the budget actual, see how much money was spent, and what we have left over, make sure that we allocate it properly in all the ways.
No, I have, I have a paperwork, I know what was spent, but it was nothing done on the streets. We did sidewalks, we did trees.
And your ward you're speaking of.
Right, I'm speaking of my ward.
Okay, because we did have streets in the.
I just want to ask one question. Swisus said that the street was repaired in Ward.
Yes.
No, 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 that was deco, I know what I'm talking about, that was deco. Deco was county, that had nothing to do with the money that I put in the budget.
But we can have a Public Works meeting, Alderman, if that's okay, and then we could.
We need to do that, because I think there's a little bit of clarity that's needed. So let's have a sidebar in another meeting to discuss that.
That's fine. Point of information, Mayor, I understood it's for the sidewalks.
Yes.
Understood that, thank you.
Further discussion isn't.
Sidewalks had two hundred thousand separate, Mr. Hudson.
The further, we'll further discuss that one, and get clarity.
I know what it was.
Yeah, I understand, we'll get clarity on that one.
Okay.
Okay, we'll get clarity on it, and we'll keep it moving.
So I don't think we got a second, Mayor.
Second, a second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Okay, next item, Mayor, I just want to let the public know that the homeward disposal, the recycling schedule is out, so if you want to get a copy for next year, the twenty twenty-four, and because of the holiday, Christmas and New Year's, it'll be extending an extra day. But they'll be right over here to the side.
On the table now?
That's great information, that's great information.
Yeah, and that's the end of my report, thank you.
All right, thank you. It's good, it's good to get that schedule, because you'll know when to put your recycles and everything out on the curve. Okay, so let's see, next we have Economic Development, Alderman Spivey, the Chair.
Thank you, Mayor, TBA, and I would just like to ask the community to please go out and support your local businesses here in Country Club Hills.
Absolutely, thank you so much. Education and Parks and Recs.
Thank you, Mayor. December the twentieth, at eleven o'clock at two twenty-seven, they have a meeting, and they are bringing in mentors and different people to talk to the students. I visited the school, I was very impressed with their computer lab, and their three D lab, and they, their one contest is making robots, so it's pretty good. Also, seniors having a dinner on the twenty-third, out of the, they got a nice dinner. And then on the fourteenth, again, we have the senior here. I just have a question, I've been trying to get something on the website, and two twenty-seven, one forty-four, and two twenty-eight are in our district, and I haven't been able to get it up, I've sent emails, I've sent texts, and so on. So I don't know the process, but just like Mr. Hudson said, that's a nice idea, that schedule for the garbage should be on the website, period, so that the people can reach it. So I don't know what we need to do to update our website, or get our website up and running, but I have reached out to put something up, and I haven't got it done. Either on Facebook or the website, it's been over a month. And it was just a meeting that two twenty-seven asked me, to see could I get done, and I brought it to the city council, and asked the city council, I don't know if y'all remember, could we start helping the schools put up stuff on the website? Also.
What, I'm sorry, what date is their next activity?
The twentieth of December, I'll send, I'll send it to you.
Do we have time to put anything up?
Okay.
Before the twentieth?
Yes, I sent you the flyer.
I got the flyer, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, I went to the website, and I'm still seeing the theater show and stuff up there. We need to update that, seriously, theater is over with.
I got you.
Seriously, okay.
We'll get it up.
End of my report, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, next we have, I'd like to get a motion to open the floor to the public.
Motion to open the floor to the public.
Second.
It's been probably motion second, roll call please.
Certainly, Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, public, if you'd like to address the council, please come to the podium. Limit your time to three minutes or less.
Hi, I'm a resident. I find it amusing that Alderman Edwards is questioning the website, since I've been doing that for months, nothing has changed. So my first question is, as I noticed walking in, you're apparently having a food drive. How's anybody supposed to know about that? Because it's not on the Facebook page, and we know it for sure isn't on the website. And you have to, it's my belief anyway, that not every resident goes to a Christian church. Because that's one of the ways, last year, you let people know you were having a food drive, you sent letters to the churches. So how's everybody else supposed to know? Item number one. Item number two, I dropped off a Freedom of Information Act request sometime the week of eleven thirteen through eleven seventeen, probably on Monday, the thirteenth, because I came and paid my water bill. I happened to run into Treasurer Burris. He informed me that the city clerk was out of town for the week. I said, well, I really don't expect to hear anything until after the holiday. I got a phone call on November twenty-seventh. I have your request, do you want to pick it up, or do you want me to mail it? Oh, could you mail it, please? It is now two weeks later, and I'm still waiting. I know the USPS is the pits at times, but I don't think two weeks from here to where I live, or longer, is reasonable. This concerns me. I've been a little agitated about what I perceive to be the level of transparency on certain things that go on in this government. We've talked about discussing, and you tell me I got to come to the administrative meetings to find out where the money's going. Also, I think we bought a street sweeper. When is that going to operate? Not by me it hasn't. Because the leaves in the gutter are amazing. So I don't know if, you know, that's the little two-block area over in Apple Tree. A lot of people don't remember we're even there. So could you please make sure somebody knows that we are, so our streets get swept? Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name. Should be a little taller.
Put it down, put the mic down.
There you go. My name is Candace Capitalo, I've been a resident for thirty-four years. I enjoy Country Club Hills, I frequent, do my shopping in Country Club Hills, and my block that I live on is impeccable. All know each other, we've all been friends many, many years. We have a problem on our block, in the forty-seven hundred block of one hundred eighty-ninth Street. It's a particular home there, that's been going on for five years. First incident, the lady was murdered. Couple years ago. I don't know what the relationship was in that home, he died twenty-six years old. This week, the garage door is just like on the ground. I think this home is rented under section eight. I believe the landlord lives out of state. And I'd like to know, it's been five years, has anybody looked into this house? And what are the, what is the protocol for landlords that live out of state? Because they don't seem to even know what's going on, nor do they care, because they're going to get their check at the first of the month anyway. That's all I have to say. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Make a motion to close the floor to the public, second.
It's been probably motion second. Roll call please.
Certainly, Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey. Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
All right, motion carries, at this time, we want to entertain the automatic reports. Ma'am, before you leave, our building director is in the back room. Her name is Stephanie Chaney, so see her before you leave. She's waving back there, is she waving? See that lady with her hand out back there? All right, all right, all right. Okay, so automatic report, we start with Alderman Hudson tonight, I think we started down here last time. No, we didn't?
You're good.
Yeah, yeah. Alderman Hudson, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. To the residents of Ward three, I'm speaking of Fond Ridge. The sinkholes located at one hundred and seventy-ninth Street in Fond Ridge area has been on hold since October of this year. The company M and J Underground, from I believe they out of O'Neal, Illinois, will probably be dealing with this after the holiday season. I've spoke with the Public Work Director, as well as the Water Department. However, I requested that the sinkholes be covered with plywood, Mayor, because presently they have like the safety, the yellow tape around it. And after four, four-thirty, if you walk back there, you can find yourself walking in a sinkhole. And that's speaking of Fond Ridge. And also, my wife took my thunder when I was speaking of State Rep. Debbie Martin, just to reiterate, she hears having a toy coat drive for pads, and so anybody can donate a new or gently-used coat, and various other items would be appreciated. And to everyone and every person, please have a safe and enjoyable holiday season. And always remember, please remember, if you see something, say something in a report.
Thank you, Alderman Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. The, just wanted to mention this, this, the street sweeper that we have, it has been in operation, and I have seen it in certain areas. But I think moving forward next year, we'll try to make sure we have a schedule so people will know, and we'll try to post something with Public Works. Also, I do want to thank, thank you, Ms. Capitalo. Mayor, the property she's speaking of, you know, it's in the fifth ward, so there's, I guarantee you, the police department, Crime Free, knows about this property. So if she can, if they can talk to the deputy chief, I mean, the police back in the back as well, so that they can get an update, because it has, Mayor, and I know Crime Free is aware of it, and it seems like it's been multiple residents in that property, so this is not one. I mean, we get calls, even the Inspection Department knows, just, I mean, and it's not just them. I get numerous calls for this property, I mean, because there are, it's a very tight-knit group over there, and they watch the houses, so if we can, if she can just address it with both them, so. Also, I just wanted to, I know recently I got a lot of calls from residents this in Mary Crest area, they were asking about individual going around soliciting, asking, did I know anything about it? Seemed like the person seemed peculiar, they were ringing doorbells, trying to be a contractor or something. I even saw him on my ring, so I. I even saw him on my ring. So I would encourage residents, if you see something like that, just make sure you call the police. That's what I told him. Just call. I don't know if he was legitimate or not, so. And particularly during the holidays, they could be watching your home. You never know what the purpose is. So just pick up the phone and call the police. Also, I wanted to just wish all the residents and my colleagues a happy holidays. And that's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I just want to also, Alderman Davis, reiterate that the fact that solicitation, you have to get a permit from the clerk?
Correct. And when I, and when I do get the applications in and they're approved, I send a copy to the mayor, to the city administrator, and the police department. So they're aware who has a license and how long it's open for.
If there's some suspicious individuals in your neighborhood, they should have a card from us stating that they have the authority to be in the neighborhood soliciting. Otherwise, there's no solicitation in the City of Country Club Hills without that.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Alderman Lockett?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank all the residents that came out and brought their children. I believe it was December eighth. We had the tree lighting ceremony, December second. It was a very nice event. A lot of little kids had big Kool-Aid smiles on their face. And it makes them happy, it makes me happy. So I just want to thank you all for coming out. And hopefully, we, we'll get bigger next year. I'd also like to mention that the toy drive event is gonna be Saturday, December sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, from one P M. to three P M. And that is in, is that at the station? Oh, yeah, it's here, it's here at City Hall, four thousand two hundred West Hundred Eighty-third Street, here at City Hall, in the lobby of City Hall. No monetary donations, boxes are provided. And that's throughout the month of November, December. Okay, that's one. Secondly, I have to mention that I am so proud, I am so proud of the Southland Mid, Midwest Hawks. Group of young ladies cheerleaders who went to the national championship cheerleading competition in Tampa, Florida with one hundred and eleven little girls. Last year, they went and the six to eight year olds won first place, won the championship. Eight to ten won second place, and the ten to twelve won third place. Well, this year, a group of kids from here, Country Club Hills, Hazel Crest, within this Southland area, which has only been in existence for two years now, went to Tampa. And when I say they showed up, they showed out. They brought home three first place championships. So it's, it's something that the city and the Southland should really recognize because these are young kids who, they're considered number one in the world. It's like the Super Bowl. It's like the World Series. It's the, you know, they're the best of the best in cheerleading. And this should be known. I mean, they did a great job. And I, I take my hat off to the coaches and the parents there because the kids just didn't go there. I mean, well, they did go there for the competition, but those kids had to bring out the homework. They did homework before they practiced. They made sure those kids was in bed early. Then they did their competition and everything. So I'm really proud of that coaching staff and all the parents that showed up. And when I tell you that I was so proud to see, first of all, them win, but the amount of support that the family and the grandparents and that was there. I mean, that place was, they had on lime green and that place was just lime green all the way through it. And, and every time when they won a championship, the other teams, which was good sports, they celebrated right along with them. So it was really great. With that being said, I'd like to wish everyone happy holidays, be safe. And let somebody know you love them and put a smile on somebody's face. Thank you, and Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you. Alderman Spivey?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say Merry Christmas to the City of Country Club Hills and the Fourth Ward and my colleagues. I wish everybody a happy, safe, prosperous New Year. Also, I will be resuming my Fourth Ward meetings following the new year, like the second week in January. Look forward to gathering with my ward, and God bless everyone. End of my report.
Thank you. Alderman Edwards?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. For the street sweeper, it's been out there. Now, what they had to do was work out some of the kinks because we got it. I voted against it because I wanted my streets fixed, period. That's how I am. Anyway, it's been out there. I've seen it with my own eyes, heard it early in the morning, like, wow, is I out here so early? But anyway, he knew, this been there, it's working. It'll get to you. Maybe we can develop, develop a path or some kind of a street list so that the residents will know it's coming, but we working with it. Second of all, for the residents listening in here, I need help with the schools. They contacted me. They saying, John, we need some people to come in here and help us. I'm asking for the help. I sent each one of the Aldermen an email today, giving them information pertaining to a school that needs help. If you can find some time, let me know. Second of all, we mentioned holidays, which I am a researcher, a historian, a historian, all that in one. But I want to say, I wish that we can support Kwanzaa too. It starts on the twenty-sixth of December and it goes to January the first. One of the biggest places that celebrate Kwanzaa is Malcolm X College. We should never forget our ancestors. And so when you do Kwanzaa, you go back into the tradition of your ancestors. I used to be a vendor at Kwanzaa. I've done it for maybe five to seven years. The energy of hearing bongo playing and old people dressing up like Africans is so important to know your culture. I wish everybody a happy Kwanzaa, a happy Holy Day holiday, and end of my report. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could be recognized?
Go right here.
I also like to thank all the sponsors that helped those girls get to Tampa. And if I can, if we could just have a moment of silence, please, for Alderman Hudson, his brother Randy Jerome Hudson, who passed away on Saturday, December ninth. Thank you. We want to keep the Hudson family in our prayers.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. One other thing.
Me and the Mayor, we're thinking Mr. Lockett on trying to put a pizza party together. So if you can give us some numbers, you know, what we might need far as pizzas, and we'll set a date. We'll work on it right away, okay?
Yes, we want to invite them to the council so that we can give them their proper recognition.
And let me also mention that the Hillcrest Junior Hawks football had about three, four teams down there. But I couldn't be at two places at the same time. Granddaddy ain't seeing that grandbaby cheer. That might be a problem. So I'm not exactly sure what the outcome was on the football.
All right, thank you for your support, grandfather.
Coach.
Coach and Alderman, you know, you know. Great, great. Okay, so just one last thing from me. The Cook County Board of Review appeals for your tax reductions for Bremen Township. That board is now open and it closed January the second, twenty twenty-four. So if you live in Bremen Township and you want to peel your taxes, this is the time to do it before they close the, the board, okay? Board of Review, Cook County. Okay. With that said, we want to make sure that the police chief and building department director stays around for a minute. And with that, just want to remind everyone about the senior Christmas party. Looking forward to seeing you there. And I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and a safe one. With that, enjoy, and I need a motion to close. I'm sorry, Steve, did you have anything?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And me and the mayor and the administrator and the clerk have been working on some things. So we're coming out and making sure that everything is getting paid and staying in compliance. So just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Treasurer. Now can I get a motion to it?
I'd like to make a motion to close.
Second.
It's been probably motion second. Roll call please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett? Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
Alderman Edwards?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would like to speak to the mayor or the council, please come forward.
Seven fifty P M.
Thank you.